Warrant being met, we'll now open the annual town meeting. We'd ask the town clerk to come and open the warrant, please.
To either of the consto... Sorry. To either of the constables of Commonwealth and Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn key inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Halifax Elementary School in said Halifax on Monday, the 14th day of May, at... May next, excuse me, at 7:30 o'clock in the afternoon, and then in there to act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up a test of copies thereof at the Town Hall, Halifax Post Office, and three other public places in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not, and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting, as aforementioned, given under the hands of our hands this 10th day of April in the year of our Lord 2018. Thomas Milias, Kim Roy, Troy Garen, Constable Thomas Hammond.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaynor. Would you all please rise? Gentlemen, remove your hats and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, a couple of things before we get started. For anyone who is new to town meeting, the way to get my attention, and that's the only way that you're allowed to talk, is if you get my attention. Kindly yell out, Mr. Moderator, raise your hand so that I can see you. If I forget your name, even though we may be friends for a long time, I apologize in advance, but there's a lot of things going on up here. So, everyone gets a chance to speak, but we do it orderly, so I need to make sure that everybody who wants to speak yells out. If you don't yell or stand up, I won't know that you're there. The purpose of town meeting is to go through this warrant in an organized fashion, which will hopefully do as quickly as we possibly can. We will ask everyone to please refrain from any sort of personal attacks, any personal discussions. The issues that are before the town here have nothing to do with any one individual. They have to do with how the town wants to organize its business, and we'll try to do it in a businesslike fashion. I would appreciate that very much. At 8 o'clock, we will have an adjournment. We'll finish whatever article we're on. We will then adjourn to the special town meeting, take up the special town meeting, and when we're finished at that, come back to the annual town meeting. As anyone who has been to town meeting recently knows, we have, within the last few years, adopted a lottery bylaw, so the articles after Article IV are done by lottery. We don't know what number they'll come up. They are numbered simply for reference purposes. With that in mind, there are certain articles that have to go one after the other, and if you want to make notes, I'll tell you now which ones those are. So, Article 44 has to go before Article 45. Article 46 has to go before Article 47. And Article 27 has to go before Article 28. So, when those... Any of those come up, we'll go to the first one, and then we can take the second one after. We have some editorial changes to Article IV, which I'll read now, so that if anyone again is taking notes, we'll go over these again when we get to Article IV. On line... So, we're going to add a line under 44. It's 44A, and it will be called the capital C-O-A. That's Council on Aging Temporary Relocation Expense, and the expense amount will be $15,000. Anyone who's keeping arithmetic, total general government then will change from $1 million... Change to $1,406,812. On line 134, cable television should be reduced from $250,000 to $225,000, and it'll all be coming from the PEG Access Fund under a subnote "I." The total culture and recreation figure then would be $610,047. Line 150, debt Halifax Elementary School fire suppression will go from... Currently, it's at $90,373. That will be zero. And line 151, debt Council on Aging, currently it's at $185,000. That will also go to zero. The total debt figure at the end of that amount is $624,697. Total operating costs will now be $23,483,609. So, those would be editorial changes that are made in the presentation. The town has the right to vote on... Vote on those when we get to them. With that in mind, we'll begin the town meeting. So, do we have a motion for Article 1? Second? Okay. Does any town official or committee have a report? Mr. Andrews from the Finance Committee.
Hello, everyone. So, just to go over the updated numbers from tonight's... We had Finance Committee meeting earlier tonight. We are going to recommend leaving on the table $565,135. So, that's the amount of money that will not be taxed this upcoming fiscal year. A lot of that change has to do with the $90,000 from the fire suppression, the $185,000 from Pope's Tavern, or I could have those confused right now, swapped. But that's the large majority of the excess levy that we are leaving on the table earlier in the year. In February, we had a meeting with all the department heads, all of... Joint meeting with the selectmen, and it was recommended at that time to leave $300,000 on the table from the upcoming fiscal year due to what we have seen in the past with special needs. At the time of the meeting, special needs was going up $200,000. Silver Lake was going up $200,000. There were other items that we were looking at. So, we basically had no levy left, and you would have been taxed to the full extent of the levy. So, because of the changes that have taken place, we... The budget that you're going to vote on tonight, that's going to be motioned before you, we're going to leave $585,000 on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Any other town reports? Mr. Milias.
Mr. Moderator. On behalf of your Board of Selectmen, good evening. Welcome to what I believe is the 284th Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Halifax. I have just a few thoughts I'd like to share with you this evening, and hopefully, some of them are coherent. I promise this will be quick, because although I'm not all that confident that we can, I'm pretty confident I'm not the only one who's hopeful we can start and finish this tonight. As is true of every town meeting, we are here collectively to do the town's business, to articulate, discuss, and debate the merits of all the warrant articles before us, and yes, spend our tax dollars. We've all heard, don't they love to spend our money at Town Hall? Sounds familiar, right? Well, just a reminder, and this comes up at every annual town meeting, it's this body, those here, and only those of us here in this room, present and voting this evening, that will authorize the expenditure of all monies, period. This body will not only be asked to approve articles along with their expenditures that have been identified by your elected officials and their appointees that they believe are necessary to operate every aspect of running this town, including employee compensation, new equipment, also expenditures that are aimed at the quality of life in our town, some of a charitable nature toward the welfare of those less fortunate than others in our community. That's our community, yours and mine. In addition, you will be asked to consider zoning articles. Some of these articles involve simple clarifications. Some will potentially change the character of our town. Having said that, in fact, all articles will have long-term impact on the type of community we envision for ourselves now and for the future, with or without us here. Again, back to the quality of life in our community. You will hear recommendations from various boards and committees, among them the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, the Wage and Personnel Board, and others that may be offered. These recommendations are presented after discussion and debate, and in some cases, hearings and/or forums. In the end, however, it is each voter's responsibility to apply their own good judgment and reason, vote their conscience, and I urge you to please consider the best interests of the entire town, meaning all of us. We all have a point of view. Please be considerate of your neighbor's point of view. We all live in this community together. We all pay taxes. We will all be impacted. And we still will all be neighbors tomorrow. So, let's get it... Let's get to it and get this work done. Thank you for your attention and the opportunity to serve the community I have truly come to love over these last 42 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milias. Any other reports from town bodies? Moving on to Article 2. Can we have a motion to put Article 2 as printed in the warrant on the table?
Still moved.
And a second? We have a motion and a second to put Article 2 as printed in the warrant on the table. Article 2 has 10 separate subparts to it. Each of the subparts is an independent subpart. So, what we will do here is divide this question into 10 subparts. So, I will take up each of the separate subparts of Article 2. We'll vote on it one at a time instead of voting on all of them at the same time. With that in mind, Article 2, Subpart 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 2, Subline 1, be moved as printed.
Okay. And we have a second? We have a second. So, that is to grant all non-union wage and personnel employees and across the board wage increase of 2%. Mrs. Roy.
It is the recommendation of the Wage and Personnel Board that all non-union employees be granted a 2% raise. The Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen support this and also recommend that a 2% raise be granted for all of our unions, including police and fire. You should also know that Halifax Elementary School Committee settled their teacher's contract, and this year's budget before you also includes a 2% raise as well. This rate is competitive to what other surrounding towns are granting their employees for the upcoming fiscal year. The Consumer Price Index for the Boston area is 3.6. This index minus food and fuel is 2.6. As I'm sure all of you are aware, health insurance costs continue to rise, and last year the increase was 16%, and this year it will be 6.5 for the average employee subscribing to our health insurance. Most communities pay for a much higher percentage of the employee's insurance. For example, Pembroke, who hired four of our firefighters this year, pays 75% of the employee's premium. Halifax pays 50% of the premium, which is not only the lowest in the area, but of the nine other towns we compare ourselves to, there is only one other town that pays 50% for PPO, but pays 65% for an HMO. And the other eight towns pay a higher percentage. It is difficult to stay competitive in the job market with this factor, but we recognize that we cannot burden the taxpayers further by requesting a higher percentage for the employee's portion. It is important to mention that because of these increases in insurance, that there are employees who are making less than they did two years ago. And the Finance Committee feels that the town can afford the 2% increase and recommends this figure. Granted, this increase will hopefully allow us to retain the quality staff that we have and maintain services at the high level of standard that the taxpayers demand.
Thank you, Mrs. Roy. Finance Committee's recommendation on Subpart 1 of Article 2?
The Finance Committee did recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. Is there any debate on the motion to approve the first part of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Moving on to Article 2. Mrs. Roy. Article 2, Subpart 2.
Yes. Mr. Moderator, I would move Article 2 as follows, to see if the town will vote to amend the Wage and Personnel bylaw as recommended by the Wage and Personnel Board or take any action thereon. Number 2 is to classify the position of health inspector from a grade 10 to a grade 11.
We have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the second subpart of Article 2, which reclassifies the health inspector. Mrs. Roy, your argument.
Okay. All right. So, yes, I am a selectman, but there is a bylaw in place that states that when the Wage and Personnel Board has openings, which we have three... Two openings, that a member of the Board of Selectmen and a member of the Finance Committee then goes on the Wage and Personnel Board. So, I was just appointed a couple of weeks ago. But luckily, I have served on the Wage and Personnel Board 24 years ago, so I do have some background. But I am new to this particular issue, and I am happy to answer any questions, but I may have to defer to other people. But I just want to give you a little bit of background of why I am presenting this for Wage and Personnel. So, in the summer of 2016, the Wage and Personnel discussed three positions that they felt needed to be reevaluated to ensure that they were within the proper grade and pay range. These positions were the health inspector, the building inspector, and the water superintendent. It had been several years since the Wage and Personnel Board had evaluated these positions, and the appointing authorities had believed that these positions were not being paid at the proper rate. As we go through them individually, I will give you more specifics on those particular positions. But first, I want to give you a brief overview of the process so that you understand it. Since our bylaw states that reclassifications can only occur at annual town meeting, the appointing authorities were to submit their formal requests for reclassification at the annual public hearing. The Wage and Personnel then received requests for reclassifications from almost every department. Again, it had been several years since any positions that had been really reevaluated, so it was understandable that they too wanted their positions to be looked at. But because so many requests had come in, the decision of the Wage and Personnel Board was to hire an outside consultant to complete a review of the positions and evaluate our grading system. The Wage and Personnel Board spent the summer and fall of last year working with the consultant. It had not been completed as of yet, and it is certainly not to the point where they felt they comfortable bringing the whole new bylaw forward. The next few months will be spent completing an analysis of the new system, and we have obtained an intern from Bridgewater State College who will be assisting the town in updating a salary comparison study. So, now I'm just going to briefly tell you how salary schedules are set. The current system is a point system. It evaluates what education, experience, initiative, accountability, and a host of other items that are the requirement of that particular job. And using the job description, each category gets assigned a point value, which represents the requirement to that specific job. At the end of the evaluation, the points are totaled, and the value determines what grade the position is. Once the grade is known, the salary then needs to be set. And in the Town of Halifax has long used a list of 10 towns who not only have a similar budget and population size, but also have similar per capita income in commercial and residential split. This criteria allows us to compare to like towns that have the same ability to pay the average salary. That is the process for determining a proper salary for our employees. So, it's a little complicated, and I know you're probably sitting there going, "Did I really need to know that?" But I think it's important for you to understand that this isn't just set because we just feel like there's a salary to be set. There's definitely a process that's in place for that. So, since the consultant's grading system was not quite ready to be presented this year, but these three positions had been identified over a year and a half ago as not being at the proper grade, the consultant also identified these positions as needing an adjustment. The Wage and Personnel Board voted unanimously to bring these three positions forward to town meeting. I was not on the board at the time of that vote, since I was just appointed a few weeks ago, but since then, I independently evaluated the positions using the currently approved program, because that's what's in place. And it's important to note that you are voting the salary for the position, not the person. And the recommendation for this year does not take place... Does not place these positions at the market average. So, we're not trying to get to the actual average. We're just trying to move these positions a little closer to what it should be. And the intention of the Wage and Personnel Board is to bring forward next year a completely revised grading and salary schedule. So, this is just the start of it. So, now that I've given you some background, I'll go into the specifics with the health agent. So, the Wage and Personnel Board did recommend that this position be moved from a grade 10 to a grade 11. And when I evaluated the position using the current process, it more than supported a grade 11. And the salary survey shows that the average hourly rate is $35.46 per hour. So, moving to a grade 11 will place the salary at $33.41. Still not the average, but at least we're moving in the right direction. And the difference in salary for fiscal year 2019 would be $1,533. This includes the 2% that was just voted on today. Mass general laws are changing, and change at times puts more of a burden on our local health agent. In order to ensure that the proper laws are being kept, we have added many tasks to this position over the years. The one that stands out to me from a selectman's point of view is the Mon Ponzi Pond and the stormwater draining system. This position writes grants and works with state officials and engineers to ensure that the health guidelines are being monitored. This position is responsible for not only writing the grants, but working with the engineers to execute the projects. This position works with DEP, the Department of Health, as well as the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife, and the grants that this position writes has saved our community thousands and thousands of dollars. I know we are here not to concentrate on the person, but I do feel that we need to point out that we have been pretty fortunate to have such a gifted and dedicated health insurance... I mean, health agent. And she will be retiring in the next couple of years, and we want to make sure that not only are we paying the wage that we should, but that we are having the proper salary to attract qualified candidates for our future. So, I don't know if there's anything else that...
Thank you, Mrs. Roy. Finance Committee's recommendation. You had a lot of time to think about it.[1331.58][1331.58](Laughter.)
The Finance Committee voted 3 to 2 to recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. Any debate on Subpart 2 of Article 2? Seeing no...
The issue...
You're speaking as a member of the public?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Andrews, 244 Elm Street.
Thank you.
The issue that I had as a member of Finance Committee looking at this was that not the whole survey that we paid over $17,000 for... Or $14,000? $16,000. Sorry, my numbers are off tonight. Should have come forward as a whole under one block, and we should be looking at everyone at the same time and not jumping individually at these. I went back and I looked at the record that the town clerks had over all the other positions that were applied for at the same time, and it wasn't just these three positions. There were a number of other positions that applied for at the same time. So, I think that they all should be reclassified at the same time as these positions.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mrs. Roy.
I can just answer that. So, I went back, and our Secretary of the Wage and Personnel Board showed the minutes that these... At least two of the positions were discussed in the summer of 2016. I don't remember if it was July or August. And again, I did talk about all the other requests that come in, because you can only make requests at the public hearing. So, yes, at the public hearing, everybody made their request at the same time, but these positions had been identified prior to that, which started the whole ball rolling with the reclassification process. And I believe the feeling was that because they had been overpaid and had been identified over a year and a half ago as being overpaid... And I'll get into the specifics... I mean, underpaid. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Two weeks. Anyway, I'll go into the specifics where we had... You know, one of the positions, we had gone out because there was an opening, and we didn't have any qualified candidates based on the salary range that we had. And again, these were identified by the Wage and Personnel Board before we hired the consultant. The consultant's report did say that these particular positions, a lot of the department head positions, were not in line. And the feeling of the Wage and Personnel Board when they voted for this was that they would just start the process with these positions. And again, we're not putting these positions at the average. We're just moving them up a bit, and the whole bylaw will be looked at over the next year.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Subpart 2 to Article 2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The moderator is in doubt. I'm gonna have to count this one, I guess. We need some counting. What we will do is a standing vote. So, before we can do that, I need to have all of the non-residents, the non-voting members over here to my left. I saw some children come in before. Are they still here, or did they leave? Are they right there? All right. Just make sure we... Don't let them stand up. Everyone else is going to have to take a seat, please, so that we can get an accurate count. So, a few folks, there's seats up front. If you're... Just like in church, if you come in late, you get to sit up front. Everybody has to be seated. Okay. Thank you for that. So, everyone is seated. So, all those in favor of Article... Subpart 2 of Article 2, please stand and remain standing. If you please be seated. Those... All those opposed, please stand and remain standing. Six, so that's eight, seven, eight. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mrs. Roy, do you want to speak to this?
Of course I do. The Wage and Personnel Board unanimously voted to move this position from a grade 10 to a grade 11. When using the current grading system, it more than supported this. The salary survey revealed that an average hourly rate is $38.53 per hour, and the hourly wage requested for this year is $33.41. Again, we're not asking to put it at the average, but we are asking it to place at $33.41, which moves us closer to the appropriate wage. And the salary difference for this fiscal year will be $1,700. This salary includes the 2% increase that was voted earlier this evening. And the consultant recognized that this position required a higher grade. Again, in order to attract quality professional candidates, we need to pay a competitive wage. Our building inspector also serves as our zoning enforcement officer. This position is not only responsible for the supervision of the support staff in the conservation, zoning, and planning departments, but this position also supervises the wiring inspector, the plumbing inspector, and the gas inspector. The building inspector position has also experienced an increase in responsibilities over the years. With the changes in the building codes, as well as the adoption of the stretch code, the job requires a much more enforcement and knowledge. State statute now requires the building inspector to be certified within three years. This is a rigorous process which ensures that our building inspector is knowledgeable in all areas. This is a benefit to our residents and is meant to keep our property safe and in proper zoning standards. Mass law states that only someone with this distinction can actually sign a building permit. Or a certificate of occupancy, as Ms. Millius just said. As a zoning enforcement officer, the position is a very complicated one. The knowledge and skill required is very high. If zoning laws adopted by the Commonwealth, and especially this local body, are not enforced, then the vision of how the town should look would not be sustained. These laws are in place to maintain the integrity of our look of our community and our bylaws, and having a qualified professional building inspector is important for our community. And paying the proper rate is necessary in order to achieve that.
Okay, Finance Committee's recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommended two, three to two.
Finance Committee recommends. Any further discussion or debate on Subpart 3 of Article 2? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Summer Schmeling, 32 Indian Path Road. I just was thinking that during the reclassification process that's going on right now and continues to go on, that none of these positions are going to be brought before the town next year with the bulk of the rest of the departments, correct?
We'll find out. Mrs. Roy?
Well, I can't promise you that, Mrs. Summer, because we're looking at the whole thing. Like, I don't know that the grade would change, but I don't know how that fits into the new consultant's plan. I don't know if the range that he's recommending, because I haven't had time to really look at it, to be honest, because I was just appointed. Right now, we have these steps in the bylaw, and what he's sort of proposing is a range. So I don't really know where in the range those positions will fall, but we're basing it on what our system is today. So they'll be on an even plane with all the positions going into next year's evaluation. Obviously, I've explained that, you know, most building inspectors make $10,000 more roughly a year, and we're putting, yeah, some of those people don't do zoning, correct? But what I'm saying is, I don't know the answer for sure, and I can't promise you that. I don't think there'll be a huge difference, but we're looking at the entire bylaw.
Yes, sir. Alexander Reed, 382 South Street. So I guess my question then, and I know you explained it quickly, Mrs. Roy, is if we're going to be doing this again next year, potentially, theoretically, why these three positions specifically got chosen? I mean, squeaky wheels?
No, 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 not squeaky wheels. Okay, so in the summer of 2016, these positions were talked about as being identified as not being paid at the proper rate. When I get to the water superintendent, we can talk about, you know, the fact that when that position was open, we had a really hard time finding qualified candidates based on the salary. So those were the positions that had been talked about. And then they had to wait until the annual hearing to submit their request. At that time, so many different requests came in that they made the decision to hire a consultant. It wasn't ready yet to go to town meeting, and so the Wage and Personnel Board voted to bring these three positions, because the thought was, we need to fix them instead of having them wait yet another year, because again, these were identified by the consultant, I'm told, as being one of the most out of whack.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Marie Cody, 46 McClelland Road. Two questions. Ms. Roy states that these jobs were identified in the summer of 2016 as being out of whack. Does that mean that the Wage and Personnel Committee investigated them and saw that they were out of whack, or were they brought to the Wage and Personnel Committee by either their governing board or their supervisor? And then I have another question.
Okay. So I was not at that meeting, but it was, I think that the secretary showed me a thing on Thursday night showing that it was discussed, that I know that Mr. Millius was part of that committee at the time. He had identified the health agent and the building inspector, and the water commissioners had gone to that particular board when we had the opening for the superintendent, and explained how they were having a really hard time filling that position. And so, but because we don't do evaluations halfway through the year, they were told to put the request in at the annual hearing.
So maybe, sorry?
Ma'am, we have to have you address me, if you would, because otherwise, we end up with too many debates.
Yes. Could Mr. Millius please explain? It seems that he's the one that brought forth the health agent and the building inspector. Could he explain the criteria that he used to independently bring that forward?
I can do some of that simply. Having had the job for 18 years, honestly, it was underpaid for a long time. The difference was, it worked for me. That was pretty simple. But when I looked around, and I saw other people's salaries, and I saw the difficulty we had and would have to attract qualified individuals, it became problematic. So when we started looking and hearing grumblings about people wanting to be reclassified in other positions, a cursory look suggested to me that most positions below the department head range were in pretty good shape. But our department heads, not so much. And the water superintendent's job in particular said to me that we need to look at some of these.
Mr. Millius, Tom, try and stick to one.
No, no, I understand. But that's how I came to the health inspector's job and the building inspector's job, because I felt they were underpaid. And kind of as supportive, for instance, I still do the building inspecting, I'm the building commissioner of the town of Plimpton, on a very part-time basis during my retirement. Even Plimpton, which by all accounts is a fairly small town, the hourly rate, for instance, I'm not sure about the health inspector, but the hourly rate for the building inspector is $35 an hour for office hours without zoning. That alone tells me that there's a disparity.
Is Plimpton one of our benchmark communities?
No.
Thank you. That sounds, Mr. Moderator, a little anecdotal. I could give the same examples with library associates. We went through three reference librarians last year, because I think the salaries don't support it. But I won't stay up here much longer. I do just want to say, I'm looking at the second mystery draft from the new study. Ms. Roy suggested twice that the study itself, the new one, though she wasn't using it, but she did refer to it twice, that says it too showed that both the health agent and so far the building inspector was out of whack. I'm looking, they're both falling in the range of the top level with the department heads, and they're not even at the top of that level. So I'm looking at the numbers that he submitted, and they are not totally out of whack.
Okay, and I also wanted to point out that there was...
Mrs. Roy, you gotta wait till you're recognized, remember? Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Roy, thank you.
Oh, okay.
It's getting, I have to, I just, just so everyone knows...
I'm off my game tonight. You know me, I'm not normally this off, but I am a little off.
Just so everyone knows, if I don't, if I don't jump on top of you like that real quick, it gets out of hand, and then he stands up, and he stands up, and everybody's talking at the same time, and we're gonna get nothing done.
I know, I'm just used to having a mic. No.
Because Mrs. Roy knows that anyways.
I know. I'm sorry, I'm off my game. Anyway, there was a memo that somebody sent me this week from the Board of Health that they had discussed it in the fall of 2016, that specific position. So it definitely had been discussed.
Okay. Any other debate or discussion on Subpart 3 of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Subpart 3, Article 2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes by, passes unanimously. I'm sorry, did I say now? I'm sorry. Majority, yes. Passes by majority.
I'm contagious.
One word can make a difference, so thank you for pointing that out.
I know, I'm contagious tonight. Okay.
Moving on to Subpart 4.
Okay. All right, let's see if I can do this one right. Okay. Mr. Moderator, I move to classify the position of the water superintendent from a grade 11 to a grade 12A, which is base pays, base pay only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to reclassify water superintendent. Mrs. Roy?
The Wage and Personnel Board unanimously voted to move this position from a grade 11 to a grade 12A. The evaluation used in the current system more than supported this request. The salary survey revealed an average hourly wage of $38.3, and the new requested salary will place the position at $37.23. Again, this includes the 2% raise, and it will be an additional $2,185 a year. Again, we're not asking to put the position at the average, but this new salary will be bringing us closer to the appropriate wage. The water superintendent has also experienced additional duties being added to his responsibilities. Federal and state regulations for water systems have increased, adding to the complex nature of this position. Almost two years ago, our current water superintendent was offered a job as a water laborer at a neighboring town. The take-home pay was higher with overtime and insurance than he was making as a superintendent on duty 24/7 in charge of running the entire water department. The water commissioners, when posting for this new superintendent job, did not have any qualified candidates apply for the position. This was very alarming, and at the time, the water commissioners requested to the Wage and Personnel Board move the superintendent up two steps within his specific grade of 11. The superintendent did agree to stay, and the request was made to the Wage and Personnel Board to evaluate the grade of this position. In order to attract professional, qualified people, we must pay a fair wage. But I don't know if there's anybody from the water department that would like to add to that.
Article 4, Finance Committee's recommendation, I mean, Section 4 of Article 2.
The Finance Committee recommends three to two.
Finance Committee recommends. Is there any discussion or debate on Section 4 of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes by majority. Thank you. Moving on to Section 5.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we, Section 5 rename and reclassify the position of administrative assistant recycling, grade 6, to recycling coordinator, grade 7.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second on Section 5 of Article 2. Mrs. Roy, your article.
Okay, so this position was not part of the original three that were identified in the fall and summer of 2016. The consultant identified this position, and although we are not adopting the new system, the Wage and Personnel Board voted unanimously to bring this position forward for an increase in grade. Using the current system, I was able to substantiate the increase to a grade 7. The consultant, using his system, felt strongly, again, that this should be increased. Going from a grade 6 to a 7, the salary would increase from $22 per hour to $23.05, and the difference in the salary would, for the year, would be $1,373. Again, this includes the 2% that we all voted earlier this evening. This position has evolved over the years, and the complexity of recycling has changed, and the position is running the day-to-day operation of that department. This position supervises three other employees, and this position also writes grants and has saved our town a substantial amount of money. At this time, the Wage and Personnel Board is recommending again that this position be graded a grade 7.
Finance Committee's recommendation on Subpart 5 of Article 2?
Again, the Finance Committee voted three to two on this.
Finance Committee recommends. Any further discussion on Subpart 5 of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes by majority. Moving on to Subpart 6. Mrs. Ruxton.
Article 2, Section 6. This is just an housekeeping item. This is an old paragraph that...
Mrs. Ruxton, you move it as printed in the warrant?
Yes, move it as printed.
Okay, we have a second? All right, now, thank you. Go ahead, your explanation.
Okay, this is a housekeeping item. This is an old paragraph that no longer applies, and we're simply eliminating it.
Okay, thank you. Any further, Finance Committee recommends Article, Subpart 6?
Yes, Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Mrs. Ruxton is both Finance Committee and Wage and Personnel.
Liaison.
Okay, any discussion on Subpart 6 of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes unanimously. Moving on to Subpart 8 of Article 2. Moving on to Subpart 7 of Article 2.
Moved as written, please.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move Section 7 as written. Mrs. Ruxton, it's your article.
This clause is for those employees that have been laid off only. If they return to employment in the town within two years of the layoff date, they are allowed to retain the vacation accrual received before the layoff. Again, this is just for those who are laid off, excuse me, those employees that leave on their own accord would not qualify.
Okay, thank you. And Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Subpart 7 of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes unanimously. Moving on to Subpart 8 of Article 2.
Moved as written, please.
Thank you. We have a second? We have a motion in a second on Subpart 8. Mrs. Ruxton, it's your article.
This position's salary is paid by a state grant. The contract determines the salary, and the state has reset the pay rate. Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Good, thank you. Any discussion on Subpart 8 of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes unanimously. Moving on to Subpart 9 of Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, I move subsection 9 as printed.
Okay, we have a second? Yes?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve Article, Subpart 9 as printed in the warrant. Mrs. Roy?
This will clarify the overtime rate for non-union positions. We employ part-time police officers. At this point, we would like to ensure that these positions are working overtime and assigned to a police detail or making the same amount of rate of pay as the full-timers.
All right. Finance Committee's recommendation on Subpart 9 of Article 2?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Subpart 9 of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Subpart 9, Article 2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Moving on to Subpart 10 of Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, I move subsection 10 as printed.
Okay, we have a second? We have a motion in a second to...
Well, I'm sorry, with one amendment.
Except Subpart 10.
Yeah, so let me go back to it. It says, add the following to, okay, classes and rates. Detail rates for call firefighters will be at a time and a half for town details only.
Second. Okay, Mrs. Roy, it's your article.
We also improve, I mean, employee, part-time firefighters, and this clause will pay the part-time firefighter the appropriate fire detail overtime rate when doing details for our town.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Subpart 10?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Subpart 10 of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes unanimously. Moving on to Subpart 8 of Article 2. Finance Committee's recommendation, Subpart 10?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Subpart 10 of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes unanimously. Moving on to Subpart 9 of Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, I move subsection 9 as printed.
Okay, we have a second? Yes?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve Article, Subpart 9 as printed in the warrant. Mrs. Roy?
This will clarify the overtime rate for non-union positions. We employ part-time police officers. At this point, we would like to ensure that these positions are working overtime and assigned to a police detail or making the same amount of rate of pay as the full-timers.
All right. Finance Committee's recommendation on Subpart 9 of Article 2?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Subpart 9 of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Subpart 9, Article 2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Moving on to Subpart 10 of Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, I move subsection 10 as printed.
Okay, we have a second? We have a motion in a second to...
Well, I'm sorry, with one amendment.
Except Subpart 10.
Yeah, so let me go back to it. It says, add the following to, okay, classes and rates. Detail rates for call firefighters will be at a time and a half for town details only.
Second. Okay, Mrs. Roy, it's your article.
We also improve, I mean, employ, part-time firefighters, and this clause will pay the part-time firefighter the appropriate fire detail overtime rate when doing details for our town.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Subpart 10?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Subpart 10 of Article 2? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. We've concluded Article 2. We need a motion to adjourn this town meeting, annual town meeting, to take up the special town meeting?
So moved.
In a second? All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye.